Here with a county work session on July twenty second, twenty twenty four, four o'clock P M. They'd like to call us to order and ask everybody to silence their phones and electronic devices and we're gonna, well, get blue. Be here in just a second. Get the blue to do the invocation. There he is. We need you to do the invocation. Man standing for the flag.
Father, we thank you for coming together to discuss the people's business. We ask that you, um, uh, help us through, help us make the right decision. And in all our service goes to the people, just like our work goes to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and first thing we'll do here is adopt the agenda that we're gonna be discussing here in this work session today. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Before we get into the agenda, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go immediately in the executive session to discuss real estate.
Okay. You got a motion to go in the executive session first and go out a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor? We're gonna go right on the executive session for just a little bit here at four oh one. That was the second, all in favor? We're now back in regular session at, uh, five oh six. There was no acting taking in the executive session. We'll move right on to new business. Discussion of office space, office space allocation and other facilities. Who's heading that up?
Jerry.
Okay, I think he might still be. We are ready when you are. Oh, okay. Yeah, we already started with the discussion of office space allocation to other facilities.
Yes, sir. Uh, noticing your issue paper, we just have kind of a tentative layout here for, uh, possibly how departments can move around to different buildings and whatnot. Uh, we've got, uh, suggested a money layout there with, um, uh, suggesting, uh, funding coming from the fund balance. And, uh, just the recommended priorities. Uh, the, uh, jail, obviously, you know, is already underway. Uh, that's a big priority. Uh, the courthouse is a priority. And, uh, we've already dedicated the, uh, the pathways building, uh, that, that one previous, what was previously a pathways building, uh, to elections. Um, just noted too in the issue paper that one possible strategy is that, uh, the other two buildings, uh, there at what was previously the pathway site, uh, one, um, uh, could be dedicated to, uh, the departments that are currently in the, uh, uh, building with the tax assessor, uh, the, uh, B N Z and tax commissioner. Uh, that would assist all of them at once. And, uh, the other might could go to, uh, D facts, the one in the back. Uh, because D facts really has the most dominoes behind it. Uh, if you look at your chart there on the first page, uh, there's a lot of other departments in line, uh, that will be behind them to move. So that will get things, uh, one, one will get things moving immediately, uh, for a lot of departments and others will get things moving in the long term for succession of departments. And, uh, that would also put, um, put us in the position, uh, Ms. Rosa mentioned before about, uh, possibly getting one contractor, uh, to get, uh, you know, a bit of a advantageous rate, uh, that would have three things going on at one site, uh, where it might, uh, uh, maximize feasibility for him to do something like that. So those are just some initial thoughts, but we really had this set up kind of to be an open-ended discussion, uh, as far as, uh, any thoughts, uh, as to that alterations or anything. Uh, you also see you have a packet here with, uh, the square footage of the buildings and, uh, just some aerial photography, just to kind of help orient, uh, there as well. Yes, sir. I'm going to further detail or if y'all have any thoughts or anything, we can just kind of open it up for discussion.
The tax assessor, tax commissioner, building and zoning currently in one area.
Right.
Talking about or reference to possibly looking in the other building that was originally allocated to Sheriff's Office.
Right.
I know one issue that is, is the building and zoning is being in the middle. And the access to that unless they come into that. I firmly believe building and zoning needs to move so there's easier access, but if we can renovate part of the builds where your tax commissioner, tax assessor is, and then bring those two departments together midway in that middle hallway, that's what I've always thought about. But I don't know if that's feasible or not. They would give more space to everybody in there and then actually take building and zoning out.
Okay, and so you're talking about, uh, renovating the existing building?
That's just my thought. I mean, if we gotta put three units that are compact now or lacking additional space, into another building with all three entities in that building, we gotta come up with a really good layout for that to work. I don't want to create a situation that we're already, that we're already in, create that again in another building. I'm not trying to take away from one office or another and trying to make somebody stay in an old building or do it. I just think we have to be extremely strategic and planned.
Right. Uh, Mr. Theron, did you want to speak to anything about the, um, possibility of renovating the existing building, the tax assessor, tax commissioner's in?
Uh, well, I had just thought we could renovate that building that, uh, if we could start in, in, you know, one section of it, one third of it, uh, move, move an office out and then renovate that. Take one of the others and move them into that space, renovate that. It would minimize moving around and everything. Uh, I will say that, that, that building has a lot of functional obsolescence, so it's, you're not, you're gonna have always chopped up offices, chopped up halls. Uh, and, uh, it probably needs wiring, U H V A C system, and plumbing, uh, because the plumbing is, is problematic there as well. Uh, so I think you'd have to do a good little bit of work on that building. Uh, but that's the way you could do it. You could, you could transfer, like, for example, I, if, if we move, we finished pathways and I'm meeting with Patty's group on Friday to talk about what's been done, what we can do, put together a proposal for bids on getting that thing moved forward. If we move their office there, that vacates their office. You could move an office in there while you were renovating this, you could move, just shuffle the offices around within the building, keep having, try to find a place for everybody to go. So you just minimize the space to allow one office to move while you renovated the other.
From the looks of this layout, though, it says temporarily, when you look at the D A, uh, courthouse, possibly be temporary location of the tax building.
If it's temporary that we would put the D A in the tax building, it sounds like we would eventually move them out. What would be the plan for the existing building right now where tax commissioner, assessor and building and zoning are? Would it be to give it to the city or to do a way? Because if not, we've got a building that's already in need of repair.
Right. Uh, that would be something the board had to do. I mean, I would think that the city would be interested in having that building that would allow them a lot more space for their government. Uh,
But they would purchase it from us, correct?
Yeah, we'd have to come to, you know, some terms on that, right? Because I agree with Commissioner Greg Gill about the, the building and fix it up. But I thought the reason we was here today to think about allocating them to another building is because that one's so old. That it's gonna be very expensive to renovate it and bring it up. That, that's, I mean, that's part of the discussion today, right? It is. And it is. And when you get through with it, and I've dealt through this before in another old building, uh, where in the county I work with, we chose to remodel an old building and add, uh, additional, uh, space around it. The elevations didn't match, so you had stairs and you had ramps. Uh, when you got through with it, yeah, we had new paint, new ceilings, new plumbing, new everything. But we still had a bunch of chopped up offices because you cannot move those low bearing walls. That's the, that's the downside of, of, of renovating that. And, uh, it, it is gonna be kind of expensive. Uh, now, I don't know, it may, might settle on the market, but, uh, right now it doesn't seem to be the, uh, downtown spacing green was a premium, but it could change.
I mean, we would definitely have more parking.
Right.
At the, uh, pathways building.
That's right.
But I, I worry about it becoming so cumbersome by putting three departments, an office and two departments in that building and
Yeah.
it's really not that much bigger, that particular building, old pathways, than the building that they're currently in.
Right.
So I worry about not having any expansion, putting three individuals out there.
You do have another building to the back. It's going to, in my opinion, it probably will take more work than the front building to fix.
Yeah, it will.
But you can put, I, I know, I'm just throwing out, you can put planning and zoning there and, uh, tax offices in the, uh, other facilities. And, um, that way they probably have more than enough room to, they could expand it. There again, you're talking about some additional dollars to be, have to spend. And I, and John's here, he knows a lot more about finance than I ever will, but, uh,
Well, that back building would work for two different areas if it was done. There's parking up above and then there's parking down below.
Right.
So there's two stories there, so it really would work for two different departments.
It could, it could work for two different departments.
It would cost, like you said, but I bet it wouldn't cost as much to do that as it's gonna cost to renovate, though.
Yeah, when you get through with it, you're gonna have more usable space than you would downtown. Uh, that, that building's just, I mean, uh, do you guys just?
I was sleeping like crazy this morning. I had to put those all in the hallway again.
Really? Well, it's got a brand, almost a brand new roof on it. Well, I was here taking some football equipment out of the car yesterday afternoon and it was pouring down. It really was. So I imagine most things, uh, are that way.
Just to throw some numbers in there too on the square footage, that, uh, front building at what was the, uh, pathway site is, uh, estimated around six thousand sixty square feet. Uh, I had to kind of estimate because it was missing the dimension on Q public. I needed to calculate it. Uh, and the, uh, what I just called the tax building for short, uh, is about eighty four hundred square feet. But correct me if I'm wrong, y'all, do y'all use every square foot of that place? Okay.
Yeah, and it's stacked up on top of.
I got it. It's stacked up and it's not conducive to what we need it for. And there's zero security.
You also have, and this was common to design, you also have a hallway that looks right down the building, takes up a tremendous amount of space. And then you have the, the chopped up offices. And, uh, that's it.
Security meaning?
We don't have, like, they walk around in our offices and most, like, we have catch. Most tax commissioner offices, but it's set up as a teller, it's like a bank. And public cannot reach the clerk. And now all they can do is reach across the desk and grab.
How much usable square footage is in the D, D, uh, D facts building next door?
Uh, these guys did the workup on that. I'm not sure what the square footage is on that.
Uh, D facts listed at fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty.
Say it again?
Uh, listed at fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty on Q public.
No, so D facts is currently in there?
Yes.
Limited. How much space is usable right now? Because the building was just renovated.
Oh, that they're not using?
Yeah, that, that D facts is not using today.
Uh, don't know. We haven't.
Last time I, last time I spoke to them, they had eight or nine people in offices and there's thirty two to thirty five offices up there, so.
Thirty offices and twenty other.
More than that.
The, the thing with them is, is they, they like to be kind of isolated because they deal with a lot of children, a lot of,
Abuse situations that need privacy.
And all. And so that's why I kind of thought that back building pathway might just be wonderful for them. Because they're back off away from things that have, you know, that, um,
You know, you could probably do that. And where the old building is up here and the parking lots in the back, that property would be valuable to demo that building. Somebody builds something else back in the parking lot and then let, from the front, add additional parking for the court square and for the stores and court house and.
There was an old gym there one time because I know when we did the parking lot, we tore the foundation out and it was still in there.
Y'all should have saved the gym.
That is one thing that.
Eleven, I got there, it was a brick.
That is one thing the city needs is more parking.
They do need more parking. And that's why I thought that might be a good fit for the city, uh, and, um, kind of wraps into the property they already own and have that parking area there. Uh, that way if they have festivals or whatever downtown, they have more places to stage it and stuff. And I have talked with them, it just seemed like it would be a good fit. And, uh, and, you know, we have the ability to, you know, utilize some of the other buildings.
I, I just, um, D facts in that isolated building, it sounds good. There's a lot of money to get that ready for them to be in there. It's almost like we've got, we've got some short-term options and then long-term planning options that we could do.
You're right.
And, and a building and zoning is in such bad shape and it's a smaller group than taxes and tax assessors. Why couldn't they move into D facts relatively easily and quickly on the other end of the building and still have the privacy? It's a smaller group. Start renovating or, or not, but, and then start moving the tax down and working down.
One thing about D facts, wherever they move, they pay us rent based on square footage. So if that back building would work for them based on square footage, they pay us, we could at least pay ourselves back for what it took to renovate.
No, I'm just saying, I, I don't disagree with that option. I just think there's a quicker way to get some things moving.
Right.
And then move them there maybe in a, you know, three to five year plan, but in the next one to two years, we could start moving people into a building that was recently renovated.
Yeah. And they give us time to fund it too, to, to slide.
That's what I was thinking. That's.
Books for the offices down there, I don't even want to speak to them. I think they could work without a counter. I think the N S that the, that counter she talks about to go and take tax, pack. Because right now you, you, you enter in and once you get inside, you kind of reach over and open a door and you go wherever you can go.
The doors are always open. He's got them into a private office.
Yeah, you got a little path door sometimes. Maybe you don't have that. All right. Uh, so, yeah, but I mean, that's, that's something we could move them into while you're renovating that, if you were to renovate.
I was, I just mentioned building and zoning, not, or planning and zoning. I didn't mention the tax.
Tax, okay.
Yeah. This is a small group, solves their problem.
All good.
And then maybe, you know, we start renovating that one or we continue discussing where we're going next, but.
Just so I'm clear on this particular map, A where, um, A or B is elections.
So how many square foot is B?
At one time, and correct me if I'm wrong, but A, what are we come, what are we looking at, um, tax commissioner and tax commissioner, uh, assessor for the A part? And I thought planning and zoning.
I thought y'all had something drew out at one time. Huh?
Before they took all the walls out.
Okay.
We, all the pathways.
The A building, right, the A building at pathways.
Okay.
We haven't demoed anything on the A building, have we?
Yeah. No, the B building, we, you know, just.
B building, yeah.
I'm sorry, you can't have part of it.
That's been allocated.
So all of B is elections. Correct. Okay.
So that twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety-three square feet, that's both buildings?
Yes.
That's both buildings?
Yeah, it's gotta be.
All right, what's, uh, what's the square footage?
What's sixty times one hundred and one?
What there?
Six thousand sixty.
Sixty thousand times.
Six thousand sixty is building A.
Building B, we have figured at about sixty eight hundred.
All right, so that's, that's gonna be.
So that'd be six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three in election.
I can actually figure.
That's what you got in building A.
I can actually figure that.
Six thousand sixty in A, six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three in election, B.
Yeah.
Right.
B is elections.
This is actually.
And therefore, so what is the, you got the square footers of the next one too?
My question is then, could, could A accommodate tax commissioner, tax assessor's office? And then what, how, how would we do that?
In looking at the two buildings, looking between A and C, there's gonna be less work to move the tax assessor, I'm sorry, tax commissioner into the back building. Because it's already set up for the teller line. If we put her in A, um, we would have to build that teller line. Because there's a lot more reconstruction that needs to be done on the A side to get it ready for them than it is to go back into the C building. I don't have a map of the C building, but you can see the only offices in the A side are just these front right here. These others back here are bigger, like a day room, a kitchen, a classroom, waiting room, another classroom. So we would have to reshape all of A. It would almost work out a little bit better for maybe D facts to come into A. Put the tax bill, the tax building in the back or, or the tax twins in the back and then maybe building and zoning up there with us in D facts.
But you've got to look at parking more accessible for tax and that area to go around building there is more dangerous for people going back there. I disagree with that. I think the tax assessor and commissioner needs to be in building A because of that access. It would be less traffic going there for D facts.
One of the things that, that we are considering that's on the table for elections is to bring the driveway around the building and take out that little, this little knoll behind the building that has a basketball court and picnic table. We, Lee and, and I think Patty were there when we were talking about that, we got it coming around and just, it just creates a little bit more parking in the back. No one's gonna be playing basketball back there in where that court is set up. And then that would still give people a way to get around the building and out to the side.
That, that is one possibility, but, um, also as well, if we put D facts back there, rather than have, rather than you know, as a basketball goal, is having some sort of little outdoor player area for the kids. Because, uh, I mean, they go out and sometimes they come back with kids that they have had to remove from homes.
They also have their supervised visitations out there.
Yeah, they do, but they're not there for long periods of time. It is supervised visitations and mo, if they have places for kids to stay, they have volunteers that are certified that they go to temporarily for that. So they, there's no kids staying up there probably more than an hour to hour and a half at a time.
But they, they do have the secondary building adjacent to the back of it too for those visitations. They have six hundred and forty square feet room back there.
You know, one of the, one of the other things to consider with it is I think that back building is not as in good a shape as the front building.
I agree.
So I think that even though you're gonna have to add some tish and walls, those are pretty easy to do. Uh, you get into some of the things you might have to do with that back building to get it ready, like have some leaks and waterproofing. You may spend more money on it than you would fixing the other office space up. Plus, uh, you know, I kind of think that, that, you know, the, you know, the special tax commissioner, they need some kind of public visibility, uh, when people come by and, uh,
This building may actually suit D facts better and put the sheriff over at the back building.
Yeah, could do that.
But then we still have the same elections conflict that we had with the A building.
Yeah.
But then you still, but you have security there then.
Sheriff within a hundred and fifty feet of the election.
I thought he just couldn't campaign within a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can't.
He'd be okay as long as they didn't have vote for on there.
As long as he's not actively campaigning, this is his.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I think if you, I, I really hope you made a legal opinion on that before you go with that reason.
Yeah.
That's one we can't do.
Yeah, as long as he's not campaigning, I think he can be in the same office.
Yeah, I do too.
I mean, you have the other candidates, their, their tax commissioner is in the.
You know, the, the other advantage of the sheriff being back there.
An elected official is an elected official. It's not a, a who he is.
I mean, you can have the same conflict with, uh, the N. And so I, I'm like you, I don't think there's any issue there. Another thing that, that I think works, you know, well, that back building already has some, uh, little security rooms. Uh, that probably with a little bit of work, you could, if they had somebody who had to pick up the old for a while, like the processing, they can use some of those and the building kind of already has that built in. If you needed something for maximum security, you just have to change out the door. And, uh, and that would give them, plus on top of that, they have, um, they have, uh, their agencies where they work together where they kind of crime suppression. They don't really want to be seen in the public. That gives them excellent opportunity to be back there. And they can be isolated too. And they could do whatever back there. So I, I think that would be a good, good area.
And that fenced in area is at least ten to twelve feet.
Right.
So can we go back to one, so D facts, you, you mentioned they pay us at least based on the building they occupy, I mean, square feet. So they're paying us for fourteen thousand square feet or the space they utilize?
Fourteen thousand square feet.
Okay.
All states, um, that's the way pathways was supposed to be doing. Um, they, and they had not paid in all those years, so that's why they had an option to pay or to find another location, but it's based on the square footage.
So they put one office in there, they gotta pay for the entire building?
But they don't have to rent from the county government. They can rent any space they want to, but
Yeah.
we offer that up to them and then they state pays based on the square footage, not based on use.
So they definitely could get by with six thousand square feet based on the usage they're doing today?
Yeah. And that's another thing I worry about, the building and zoning, tax assessor and tax commissioner going into this six thousand square foot building. The current building that all three of those are in is over eight thousand square feet. So we're cutting down about fifteen hundred square feet for three areas that don't have enough space now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Why does this admin need to move and double the size to that building? Why do we, we're going from seventy thousand seventy square feet to fourteen thousand?
I, I think it was just to accommodate future growth. Uh, but you could do some of that short term by relocating the D A's office back to the courthouse. And I do, you pick up space there, you pick up space.
Well, originally, when we started talking about the D facts building, it was brought up to move building and zoning up to that building with us to get them out of that center park. That was the original talk.
This unit.
Right.
Yeah. You take building and zoning in, in this group into that building.
Yeah.
And shit leaves this for the sheriff.
And.
D facts in number A, and then we hold off on remodeling C because that's, that's gonna be the big ticket item, in my opinion, is getting C ready to do whatever.
Right. Because if you have an emergency situation to where one building's not working, if you have additional space for the admin, you can move that particular office to the admin and still continue to work.
Or, I mean, you could put all of them in the D facts.
Has anybody thought about moving all the courts to the D facts, including the D A's office? Because we're gonna eventually have to be out of that courthouse.
Yes, we, I, it was in the back of my mind as an option to talk about later.
We could fit all of us in there.
And there's enough room to do a courtroom in there.
I don't know where we'd have court. We'd still have to go to the courthouse for court. Um, but I've got an employee that can't get well because of the mold. We had more leaks this morning. There was an inch and a half of water in the,
The basement.
In the basement and in the closet where the controls are for the elevator. Um, so I, I don't want to leave the courthouse, but I just think we don't have a choice but to eventually leave so y'all can get something done. And I don't know what your timeframes are. This is, I apologize.
So you have one courthouse, one courtroom for probate and superior, and then you have.
Probate, superior, magistrate.
But magistrate uses a small, correct?
No.
They don't? Why not?
Hmm, because you can fit about ten people in there. So she can only have, I mean, it's, her calendars are too big for it. So we're just using that one courtroom for every court right now.
Because, you know, you and I had spoken about the West Georgia Tech and Dr. Post had said, you know, we could work something out contractually to be able to have courts.
And I'm open for that. I'm open for that if we needed to. And then that would be proximity wise, D facts building and right across the street, that wouldn't be a logistic nightmare.
And two other area in the D facts building that you could use is you could build walls in that building, that you could create your own courtroom there.
So that was actually something that I, that, that, that I had thought of there is we have talked about when we go up there. We are going to have to build commission chambers. Eventually, when we move up to the D facts building, we're gonna have to build the commission chambers.
commission chambers. And when we do that, a courtroom would not be very hard to transition from a courtroom to a commission chamber.
Commission chamber would be easy while that building's already set in.
Yeah.
Well, and that was my thought when I looked at this map a while back. It would be easy to put every court in there and it still gives us room for storage for the massive amount of files that we have. And it looks doable.
Besides the.
Besides the black mold issue, what would it benefit to still just have one courtroom?
We really need to. Because I could have two trials at a time.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. If we moved you, yes, it would take you out of a situation.
Yeah.
But you're still in the.
Yeah.
Justice situation that.
Eventually, we need the two courtrooms back, you know. Ideally, we need the two courtrooms, but we haven't had two courtrooms for.
On the roof.
How long's the DA been over here now? Two years? So, we've been, they're about used to it now, but we sure do want it back. But we got to do what we got to do to get all this stuff fixed.
Well, I thought we approved to get the roof fixed and the roof leaking and we're going to talk about the roof leaking for a year and a half.
Yeah, I think this isn't a roof. I think it's, well, it might be a roof.
It has to come from moisture.
I mean, no, but it's not the actual dome this time. You've got new bricks coming off on the probate side. The, there's, that was cleaned off last week and there's a brand new pile of stuff that's fallen over the weekend.
So, Lee and I talked.
And everything. I'm hoping by the beginning tomorrow, we'll hear back from our tech about those two roof options and then we'll be able to go ahead and move forward with those. We can get those, that information back.
I couldn't see, find any new leaks on the third floor today. So, that's good. Yeah.
Lots of penetration to go through to get to the third floor. You ought to be.
The basement, the reason the basement flooded is the outside drains got backed up. It was just probably, probably a volume thing and then it came into the basement.
Oh, okay. So, you did figure that out?
I did.
It used to be worse until the state came in and redid.
One thing I don't think any of us have said or took into consideration.
No, thank you.
We talked about moving all of the pathways. I don't know how much it would cost and I don't know how we could finance it, but the ideal thing, because you stop and think, when you go to tax assessor's office and you got to get a D, you walk across the street and go to the courthouse. You go to the building department, she says, I need to, I got to have a plat, I got to have this. You walk across the street and go to the courthouse. You move everything out here, everybody's got, I'll be right back. Get in the car and drive up to town, then drive back. If we took that building up there we're in now, if we could put them in someplace temporarily and put a two-story building there, tear it down, build it back, brand new, two-story building. You're going to have double the square footage. You could have your building and zoning people, you could have tax assessors and everything, but that's a conflict too. But it's convenient for the citizens to be able to go to everything right there in the court square. Yeah. With the technology today, I think it, you know, may solve some of that, but you're right. I know that in Calweda, we try to keep everything close in downtown. And we did, when I went to work in Calweda, all the government option, all the government court related things, voter registration, everything was in the courthouse. And when they began to grow, we built a new justice center, a new juvenile justice center, and moved everything out of the courthouse except for probate. Because it was, had the birth certificates and death certificates there and it was kind of a ceremonial thing. Still got that ceremonial courthouse, but very few people use it. When the judge gets sworn in, they like to go up there because it's really pretty and animate, but rest of it takes place down at the center. And so, I mean, that's another thought. That's another option, is taking that building down and, and turning it into a two-story structure.
And $20 million later.
Yeah, I hope not, but it's, whatever we do is going to be expensive.
Oh, yeah.
Going to be expensive. Now, again, utilizing what you have is less expensive, but we're not going to be able to sit here and solve our problems for 20 years from now. So, so if you move three offices in a building today, that don't mean they'll always be there. You'll have to move them around probably and build more space at some point in time. And so, and I know another county that I would do some work on, they're doing a new admin building right now. And it's a bigger county, bigger whatever. They're going to end up with about $30 million in that facility. It's a new admin building. And they're putting most of their operation there, but that's about what it's going to cost to do that. And that's not even courts. So, I mean, that's another, another option for you. And I had an intent on speaking, I'm just, I was going to listen, but that's fine.
Well, we've got different good ideas.
Let's see. I think one thing we need, and I do believe it's been mentioned before, just like Kai came up and spoke just now, that's an idea and some of us may have thought about it, but we haven't thought about the necessity and why. I think we can sit here all day as a board and say, well, this department needs this, this department needs that, and we'll get it wrong. At least 80% of it, we'll get it wrong. But I think what we need is something from each area and just say, these are what we need. This is what we're dealing with. These are the negatives that we deal with on a daily basis. This is what we can live with, this is what we can't live with, and we need to take that and break it down and look at what we have to try and accommodate every area because we don't know her office, we don't know Patty's office, we don't know DA's, we don't know building and zoning as to what they really, really need. So.
I mean, I agree with that.
I just think we need something to look at and then compare and say, well, this building will meet the needs of this for this period of time.
And I, I think, you know, doing that would be important, but I think, and I think it's also important to, to try to prioritize where we go, where, when, because it, say, we're going to start here, we need a place for that office to go in the meantime. So, you need a real plan of doing it. And also, that gives you a plan of continuity where you don't get done with one and say, well, heck with that other. We have a plan that we move from this project to this project to this project until we get it all done.
I like using D facts as kind of a landing spot for our transitory departments as, as we do these things.
What is wrong with the elections building other than the security and space you needed?
I kind of like using all that spare space in D facts as kind of a temporary landing spot.
The front, the, the front is, get down some of the ceiling has, and it put enough pressure on it to break some of the windows up front. And so, my concern is just.
So, there's a lot of structural issues with that.
Plus, we spend $1,000 to $1,100 a month rent for an additional building that's not ours either.
And that building is not ideal.
For the transitional moves, what would be wrong with that space?
Yeah. And eventually, eventually that would be a good spot for your IDA because they'd have exposure, you know, like storefront exposure.
Good spot for what?
IDA. And they would love to be there.
But they still have to all be renovated before they go there.
Yeah, it has to be, you know, at least the structural has to be done. The office is pretty, pretty nice. It's got an old bank vault in there. I mean, it's a neat looking office, but you got to deal with that structure and the roof and all of that.
It would have an HVAC.
HVAC, okay. So, guys, we're not going to get all this done right away. This is going to have to be a plan where you plan it in your future splosh and you may even go to another splosh before you get all of it done.
I think we need to set up something with the state, whatever area it is, and beg them. I mean, listen, we've got buildings, we can't afford this, we need help. And these are mandated services that we have to provide.
Right.
I'm not above begging.
Yeah. I mean, we mentioned the building over here in West Georgia. I mean, we could, we could approach them from our perspective of us using it and see what their plan is and see if that could accommodate something.
Well, Dr. Pose was more than willing to at one point when Kai needed an additional courtroom, as long as the sheriff would do and contracted for security and that Kai and them would contract for use of it, she had no problem utilizing their two big rooms that would serve as a court system.
Right. In Calweda, kind of what Blue was telling us, we actually built furniture. We had a cabin shop to do things like. We built furniture where in just very few minutes, we could convert like your space there into court space. We had a thing that come in for the witness and we had something over here for the clerk to come in and our guys brought it in, put it up. When court was over, they took it away. But bigger room than this room to do that.
Well, I know we give up this room quite often for other meetings and all too, but at this point, there's no reason if it's available to why the court system couldn't utilize this, as long as sheriff provided.
Security.
Yeah, because the judges could come in and utilize the bench and.
Then it would work for the smaller court.
Right. I'm just saying if you need it.
Yeah.
But you don't need it for probate and magistrate sometime.
Yeah, and it would be their smaller.
I mean, I, I know we need, you know, they all want new offices, but for what I can say, the, excuse me, the building and zoning and all that, it's, it's, to me, it looks like it's about the same as it was 10 years ago. Hadn't changed much. But we got to get the roof on the courthouse fixed or we're going to lose the courthouse.
Yeah.
I mean, that should be top priority.
It is. We've got the bids and we're waiting to, to get information from the consultant to figure out which of the two is going to be best, but we're, we should be getting that. I mean, I called them twice today.
We don't have it by our next meeting, what we're going to do, when we get it in, I'll give you guys a call and say, hey, this is what they're recommending and we'll go ahead and move forward with it and confirm that you're meeting in office. Because you're meeting in office, it's August 14th or something like that.
If we got health concerns in offices, especially that courthouse, why can't we move them into a building that's good immediately to alleviate that? I would not want to go to work every day in that kind of condition. I mean, we worry about retaining employees. That's the number one trigger to me. I don't want to be here.
Yeah.
Just move them.
One thing we've been looking to do was, once we get that leak done, and I understand and I agree with what you're saying, then we're going to start that remediation and we got to do the HVAC because if you don't fix the roof, you don't fix the HVAC, it's going to come back.
Right.
And then at that point, but that's going to take a while to do.
Can we move them there for the interim while all that work's being done?
Because I have concerns about remediating HVAC.
Yeah.
When I've seen what comes out.
I understand.
At this point, if the state.
See, when you say that takes time, we've already been talking about it for over two years. We've been. I just want to talk about, listen, let's make a plan and focus.
Offices out to the old pathways building, do you have the parking out there?
Yeah, they have.
I mean, you're talking about putting building and zoning, tax assessor, tax commissioner, elections, all out there at that building. Is there parking out there?
You'd have to go back in the back and create more parking if you would. You had to create more parking for it there. But I mean.
The fact like Adam, you know, the D fact building up here is twice as big as this building.
If you guys want us to and direct us to do that, we can absolutely start the process. We just need direction from you guys.
But what process are we going to start?
Well, we talked at one time before last year about what all we could do in D facts building. That was it. Yeah. Yeah, we, we, what we need. We even walked it, remember they got, they fixed it all up, it had a leak or something, whatever, and everything's been renovated, fixed up. Had the pipe burst.
Pipe burst, yeah. We cannot house our people with them though. They would have to be completely out of that building because we can't house them with a state entity right there.
And I think right now, they're on a month to month lease. So, we do probably have to have some notice we give them to relocate. We can go down that road. I mean, what we really need from you guys is to say, not that we just talked about it, but say, this is what we'd like to see. And then that gives us action to move and do what we need to do it. Right now, our priorities are the jail, courthouse roof, and the pathways building for to accommodate.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's what we've got on the agenda. And at the jail, you've got the roof done, you've got the blocks and you've got the plumbing, which will be starting very soon. All that's been lit. Hopefully, we'll have the roof at the courthouse. And this is just part of it. This is just a flat roof panel that's coming off the dome. We'll have that ready to go here in the next couple of weeks anyway. And then we need to know where to go from there. If we make the, if you're talking about D fact building, if we told we wanted that building, where would they go from?
They don't have to rent from a government entity. They can find another building.
Right.
But under the contract that's there, there is a process we would have to start for their eviction, but legally to do it. And then we also have to look at too, that if they don't rent from a government, we're no longer going to be getting that lease amount every month, which is what, $7,000, $8,000 that they pay us monthly for. That's not a reason to keep it, but we have to go through the legal avenue to do it and we need to make sure that they can, there's a building in the county that they can utilize for those kids. Because there are some, they have to be very private because some of those are new situations. They can't share that with other.
Yeah, we need D facts in our county. We just didn't know what to take. We keep talking about how great that building could.
Yeah.
Be utilized. I'm just trying to figure out how come or not. If they have a place we can put them, then we need to start the process.
Yeah. That's, I think the next item on your list, you named out these projects. To me, my opinion is building A, get it ready for D facts and start the process for them moving over there. And let this building be the landing spot to get that courthouse right. Move whatever we got to in there while we go through and get the courthouse saved and taken care of. They can move back and tax half of that building, go over here or whatever, but.
But can they go in and out of building A without having to be mingled in with elections?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. And one of the things I might suggest on building A, you can take a look at that drawing that's there. The little section in the middle, right here where it comes together, we could probably build a corridor right here and then have it come off of that. And then you wouldn't have to deal with Patty, they have their own entrance here, but that way you keep them out of all habits that come through here and go through another office.
Well, you could do it like you said before there and put right outside of that window, put a door.
Right.
Off of that walkway.
Yeah, right here, right. And they could have their own entrance. And then if you had this, they could, you know, draw this back to here and you could have that as just a corridor. It would take a whole lot to make that and then they could walk down that and you could have an office that says, you know, just building department, you could have one that says whatever and access it that way.
Just remember, there is no ADA parking in the court.
Right, right. And we'd have to create.
And they have to have ADA and.
Yeah. But you could, you could do that with this.
There's no space back there to do it.
I think probably walk through with Kenya, talk to Kenya, the director.
Right.
About the possibility that we may need it and take her and walk her through there to see. I can assure you, I'd be pushed back. And I mean, I know I'm recording, it's okay, but I'm sure it'd be pushed back. But we also need to see, it may be less work to get that to where we need it for D facts than it would be for any other entity right now.
Yes, because there's more offices over here than we can use.
Well, it was kind of set up on the same pathways and things like that.
Yeah, it is.
So, it may be, except for that kitchen and all would need to be gone, but I, I think that would be close to possibility. And then we use that building as a temporary source for.
Everybody else.
Kai and.
Yeah.
Get that done and then we can move others as we need to, as we can renovate, which we've been talking about for 20 years.[1688.25]
Kai, if you. You, there wouldn't be enough space there for you to accommodate your court and these other offices on a temporary basis with it.
Um, I mean, we'd have to look at it, but if you're talking about putting magistrate, pro vay, superior.
Yeah.
DA.
Yeah, all of them would go there.
You'd probably use that office up.
There's thirty-three offices, I think.
Okay.
If we have the, if we have the DA.
Some of them are gonna have to be.
Over there, that's been over in space over here.
Files.
Yeah.
What about planning and zoning in this building where, um, on that side, IDA and the DA's gone, if you have that side.
So Kai, would your, would all of your records and the other court records not be secured enough where they're at for now? I mean, that's a lot of.
And I've been thinking about this. I've had some conversations. My thought is I would need to move all my open records. So all my open case files. My closed case records would be fine where they are. We would still need to be able to access them from time to time, but that's not a problem. Um, the real estate records, most, everything is digitalized now. Um, so that's helpful there too.
So where we could probably accommodate you and your staff and all the other courts and their staff, we may not be able to accommodate the security for those files. So that's something to think about too. If they are actually okay where they're at and secured. Then it may be that you have to go back there to find something.
Yeah.
If you need to, because that would take a lot to be able to build or construct a security area like you already have.
Well, and it would be okay with a locked door.
Right.
You know, um, most of my stuff's not in fireproof vaults anymore anyway. That's why we're moving to digital on everything.
What you would also have to do, you'd have to condition that to allow this to go.
It'll be better than where it is now.
But again, as much. But as much as we keep talking about how much room's over here, we can't keep talking about it cause we can't use it. So we either gotta, like he said.
We gotta get.
We gotta go look at it and start the process to move them over there. And now we can sit here and go, hey, we got this building here. Let's put boo, 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 you know, here, here, here.
I think it's the lynchpin that can start this whole process for us.
Well, we've been talking about it, listen, for a long time, we've talked about that building and we've just never made a decision to do anything.
And see, you can make that decision, then it allows us. We are visiting offices and work together. We can work at what that, that.
And defect won't need as much parking as all these other people's wanna be.
Right.
It's all right. They got piles and piles of people there that's, you know.
No, they don't.
Yeah. But I think we should start that process of getting ready to move them.
And I, I think that taking Kenya and Jennifer Cannon, who's the office manager up there, if Kenya's not available, Jennifer can. But to walk through and see, because whatever we can do minimally to accommodate them in that. I think their office would be, need the least construction or re-renovation of that particular building right now. And then another, another good thing about moving out of the courthouse is that will, uh, speed it up and hopefully decrease the cost when we can have a couple of things going at the same time. Plus, not twenty-four-seven access to it, but, but Monday through Friday, eight to five access. And we need to know what the defect contract states and.
And I think it's, uh, I think it's.
I think it's sixty days. I think it's sixty day notice of.
We'll, we'll pull that contract and see what it says. Uh, I guess, are we okay to go ahead and tell the listeners today, I guess, are we okay to go ahead and tell defect?
We are looking into it. Yeah, I think we're looking into it and we need to take them.
We need to put that in motion and get it rolling.
Well, we need to take them and tour that building too, to see. If it would even work. If not, then they're gonna have to look for somewhere else to rent, because if it comes down to where they say, oh, we need five hundred thousand dollars worth of renovation to a building that I don't think really needs that. Then that building may not accommodate them, but it still shouldn't stop the process of us abiding by the contract.
Well, today's Monday, so probably they'll walk in and tell you something by Friday.
Well, we need an agreement from them to the plan, and they agree to it before we remodel it to those conditions, because we can't have them back out of that once we've modeled it for their fit. And then have to change it to somebody else's later.
That's what I'm saying, walk through, figure out what they.
The state, Georgia too.
Yeah.
Where we'll know that that'll be there.
If you tell, I mean, you tell them, we, we're gonna put them into a newly remodeled office to their fitting. So it max, you know, it maximizes that space, gets them in the right fit space so we can utilize a larger building. They shouldn't have a problem with it.
Newly renovated. Newly renovated as minimally as we can.
But I would, I would suggest that they look at A building as well as the C building, which is the one out back, and see if the, if the options would work better.
The C building got a lot of water damage and cracks.
Well, there again, it may get better for defects being out back or whatever. Anyway, with that being said, while I'm thinking about it. Uh, the, the morning that we had the Bible reading up at the courthouse or whatever, and I've mentioned this to several people, but I just wanted on record that, that. To the left on the west part of the courthouse is sinking and, um, I think it was suggested, it might've been an old tree there at some point or whatever. But we need to address that as well.
Which side of the building is that?
On the, on the LeGrange Street side, yes, to the left. And, um, I just noticed it from when we had the trees up there for Christmas or whatever.
Could be trees, it could be a leaky, uh, stormwater.
I think there was a tree out there and it was cut years ago, and I think it's just.
It's sinking pretty bad, but we do need to address that.
Brought it out, yeah. We can add here that, we get some soil out now.
And this is probably tacky on my part now, but we really do need a few rugs around all these buildings. I mean, I'll, when you go to wipe your feet and the rug is literally worn out. I mean, seriously, I think we can afford a few rugs around here.
We're gonna need the roof first. We should.
I'd say get a rug first. It'd be cheaper.
We'd probably get a rug while we're doing it.
But in the meantime, we do need to figure out where these, uh, reallocation, everything needs to go.
If you can talk some, where on the, what's that we kind of talked about? The courthouse, I understand what plan will be here, uh, moved around. We got building B going. We may have building A going to accommodate these folks. Uh, we still got the tax building. We're gonna need to think about what we're gonna do to that. And, um, again, I don't know.
How quickly can the elections office currently be ready for IDA? Is, is. Commissioned to plan to stay, they can move in there.
We'll get me out first, but.
Well, once it's, once they're out though, it's, it'd be pretty quick. Unless we get up there and we find, God, the roof's gotta come off. But it'd be pretty quick to accommodate.
All you'll have here though, when you move IDA, is two small offices and a building conference room.
And that's not enough for you?
Yeah, probably would be, uh, could, could it be a, a tidler space that would accommodate something?
The DA's offices would be free now. Well, you just reality.
We could just move them around. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Kai was saying DA go to defects with them.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, those offices are empty, so we shuffle down, they get that whole size of building. It'd be interim, but I don't, you need to walk in and look at it and see.
And, and the tax building's gonna be all the windows, those windows, I think they. You push them out probably.
You need six offices.
There's mold in the kitchen.
Oh, yeah.
And your bathroom.
It'll be a nice, beautiful lot of building out there.
Is, is it mold or, or melded?
It's mold.
I mean, we do need a fair assessment of that building and the cost it would take to get it in good, healthy condition and then get it operational for today's use versus demolition and reconstruction. What, what's the better play long-term financially?
I don't know, Tricia went out a few months back and I knew, code I did.
Yes, that's why, cause I'm sure that building's not the current code of electrical, plumbing, any of that. Was it gonna take to get there versus just tear it down and build just the same footprint again? I, we, I don't wanna throw good money on top of good money just to.
The only thing like to say with that one, you get through with it. You're gonna have new HVAC, new plumbing, uh, everything. But you're still gonna have an old, old nineteen forty's building design where you have offices that are just strong and, uh, and there's nothing you can do about that.
And if, if we tore it down, is it old enough to work to have materials where we have to do all the?
I don't, I don't, I think it's maybe older that you're gonna have to worry about some of those materials you have to deal with.
Well, I do know that asbestos is flooring.
Okay.
It is.
It is asbestos flooring.
Well, you know, years ago, that came up as a big issue with everybody. It's so common now that there's ways to accommodate it. It does become habitable to break it up. And so you get someone, you know, side of the building, you may have to do it.
So if you don't make a prior.
I would say, you know, our, uh, where we are, our asbestos flooring, our resource level is pushing up and we are walking on it for asbestos.
How many staff do you have?
Seven.
Charlene has two. John has what, four?
Do you have the judges coming to go with them?
Gonna need twenty officers over here. Say they need ten for storage, that leaves ten. How many for that? Three?
One, two, three, four, five.
At least five more officers.
One, two, three, four, five. Oh, they got the position open.
Was it taxes seven?
I think so. Do you think we could fit the, the courts and the tax people in the defect's building?
I actually asked Kai earlier, if we move all the courts there, it'd be difficult if they probably would occupy some.
I don't know, they're in Texas.
Move the all.
Texas.
All the offices.
Right.
At least five offices on one of these guys.
And on us, just to.
Yes.
Anything that I would need to move, um, computers and all that stuff, the clerk's authority would assist me with that, so that's not gonna be a huge cost on y'all, so just. That's a blessing.
Well, tell them they need to pay us rent for a while too.
Well, um, guys, I think, I think we've got something to work with. We could start this conversation. We'll visit with the defects and. Let them know what we got going, what we're planning, take them over, show them that. Uh, say I'm meeting Patty on Friday to, to go ahead and see where we are, and I'll try to work up the specs and get the rest of that building finished out. Um, I, I might could get someone in to take a look at the, uh, tax building. Give us some thoughts and ideas on what it would take, what it may take to accommodate that and, and just give us an estimate on it anyway. Um, and then we could talk from there about whether it's better to try to remodel that or build a, you know, two-story area of it or what we needed to do. And, uh, you'll gain a lot of, even if you turn around and built on the same footprint as one story, you'd get some, uh, benefit of just better design, but.
Look, I wasn't kidding about going to the state. I think we need to sit down with certain areas. There's got to be some money.
Yeah.
Available for counties that are having major issues with, they can't even house their own employees.
Right.
There's got to be some money out there.
Got to. Why can't we get someone like Randy Roberts or one of our senators or whatever and say, open that door?
Yeah, I mean, you know, at one time, you know, they had, I don't even make change now, one time, they used to have discretionary funds that they could give you at any. I know we got, this is a long time ago, but we got fifty thousand dollars one time of discretionary funds to be able to build a visitor center. And we built the visitor center.
Well, didn't we get money the time we went up there? Me, you, Rose, or Beth and Buster?
We did, yeah, we did. Uh, yeah, they'll, they'll, they just like to see you have a plan and work and, and not lean it all on them. If you've got that plan, it, it.
And you gotta ask for it, cause they ain't gonna give it to you.
No, they won't give it to you.
They ain't gonna come down and go, what do y'all need? We got, like he said, we need to.
I wish we'd have kept track of all the dollars we've got, but we've got a bunch of money from GDY. We had, you know, almost Rosa and I looked at a covert and we called up and. Guys retired, and he was a long friend of mine. He sent us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with no questions asked.
One thing about the state though, you better go in with double what you really need and ask, cause you're gonna get about forty to fifty percent.
But we did get up here, we got the, you know, some money, the five hundred and something thousand dollars we used on the, uh, road up at Lucius Road. But this is, this is a different section of, of, you know, federal government, I mean, local, state government, so we'll just have to see. Could be potentially grants.
Yeah, yeah, there's some community facilities funding that could be available either as grants or low-interest loans. Obviously, the low-interest loans right now, it's, no, no interest is low, but we can look and see what grants. But I think like you're saying, they're looking more for a plan, that we've got a plan to fix this stuff when we go up and ask for the money.
There's, there's things like CDBGs too, community development grants, but. And using those, we probably wanna look at the buildings that we're doing on the backend, because those projects are slow.
CDBGs are paid back though, right?
No, they're not.
No, no.
Some of them are.
Some, some, some you can.
No, some of them are. It's a match on some of those CDBG grants.
Yeah, so some of them, uh, well, the match is usually pretty low. Um, it's calculated off, uh, every dollar over three hundred thousand.
Right, but some of them are paid back, some are just free money.
The original pathways building, we got a CDB on that as well as.
And they had to pay that back.
Or the car station up there, that was in the eighties.
AC CG, I don't know if it's still got it, I think they have a program actually where they can do a lease, kinda like the homes in reversal we do with IDA. And, uh, they will lease it to you. You don't have to go through a, a Geo bond, a, a referendum to have that done. You can build, build your buildings, and then you can pledge some future, you have to pay the rent on it or a payment on it basically. Then you can actually utilize, since you dedicated some of your future slots, pay some of that off, so that's just another tool in the hand.
Well, there's so many options too. We may need to look into some type of rental or lease program on these portable buildings that are rather large to maybe put some. Of our current offices in and something that's large enough to accommodate. So in the meantime, hard, cause we may not have space to move everybody around to renovate, but we may have to lease something that we can put those individuals in. To be able to renovate an area. We gotta give or take somewhere.
School systems do that often, and they have a lot of classrooms, mobile classrooms everywhere.
Yeah.
And they have to be classrooms out there as it did schools and so forth.
And for temporary facilities, a lot of them are better than you would think. Like in, uh, Americas, they had the modular hospital down there, and my first child was born in it. And it was, it was a lot better than I would have imagined.
Oh, yeah. There's a lot of options. What kind of agreement are we in with West Georgia Tech in that building?
I think what we have there is we own the land, and I'm not sure how the building came about, but, uh, but, uh, there's a comfort on that. Uh, where both of us would have to pretty much agree, but, uh, you know, if they're not gonna utilize it.
Do you remember?
It states in the contract, and I can't remember if it's five or ten years, if the school system does not utilize or provide services to the citizens of Meriwether County with an X number of year. Um, air timeframe, then the building does revert back to us because it does not serve the purpose in which the building was put here. So that's one part of the contract, and the other part is, like, they wanted us to give up our rights to the property so that they could get certain loans from the state to be able to put new roof and all that, but then we would sever our rights to it. But I do believe they offer welding or something right now, but if they go X number of years, and I don't remember the exact five or ten, and provide services to the county, then the entire building and all comes back.
I don't even know that they're doing welding now. I know our firefighters use it sometimes for like training classes. They just had a class graduate. I don't even know what they're running over there.
When I went over there, um, with Dr. Post, she said they were doing some CNA classes and also welding.
When was that?
A year ago.
A year.
Michelle was here then.
But none of that matters. Leadership Meriwether to fire, then that's not the West Georgia Tech providing the service to the county.
No, it doesn't.
That activity doesn't count.
Right.
No, it's them providing the classes.
We could also explore other entities like cities, food, see if they had space that would be available for us to use and accommodate some of the offices during the renovation. Be a possibility too. We just need to explore, uh, that as well.
We probably need to pull the contract with defects.
Right.
And we may not renew that.
We didn't renew it.
So.
It's on the manual, but I saw the.
Right, but it would still be, the, the severance part would still be under that sixty days, I believe it is, but.
Yeah.
Um, we need to pull that contract. We also need to pull the contract with West Georgia to look at that to see what the reversion clause and all that is.
Right.
We'll, we'll do those. We'll pull those things and, um.
That's what Jared Blue's gonna be working on there. He's already got enough projects to be working on that we've already discussed, so Doc.
I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna get into discussion.
Somebody needs to be speaking it up and going. So the talks and notes are going, we're all over it like white on rice. We're getting it done.
Yeah, I wanted to check with you before we get too far to make sure that, that, that at the table, we're on the same page. So if all the discussions work out, we're talking about defects to pathways A or C. And then we're talking about the courthouse and the DA to defects. Building, planning, and zoning to administration, elections to pathway B. Did we say building? Yes, right, yes.
Yeah.
He's talking about get these contracts pulled and see what we have within, see what.
Oh, yes, sir, that'll be, that'll be part of, part of the prep work that starts before. I just wanted to make sure that the one to two to three was in line with what you guys were saying earlier.
Like one of y'all could reach out to who Brian was saying, the lady over there.
Sure.
You know, don't call them, go, we're moving you out. Call them, go like.
Oh, no, of course not.
We're trying to figure out how to solve.
Yeah, I don't like helping you guys with that. I really didn't intended on getting, I was gonna let them do this. I've done my presentation earlier, but, uh. Uh, when you, when you go through these things a lot, it's, uh, sometimes, uh, you can, uh, be helpful, so.
What I'm hoping is by our, by the time this whole board is here at the first meeting in August, we've got some answers. We've got some discussion. We mean, we've got some feedback, not going to work on it.
I agree.
Well, we do need to know what they think it would take to be able to accommodate defects at that building A over there, um, so that we can determine cost. It may not be that much. Um, so that we can determine cost. It may not be that much.
Right, that's what I'm saying. One of these guys would both, um, reach out to the lady you said and go ahead and have that walk through like, or unless you want to do it yourself, but, you know, get them going, going on it.
I'll be glad to go with whoever, because Kenya and I do have a really good rapport.
Yeah, there you go.
They're gonna need to understand that we're not building what they used to call, everybody wanted to ground Class A office space. We're building governmental office space. And so it is not gonna be the greatest in the world, because we're not gonna spend that kind of money, but it will be usable, clean, safe, uh, everything for.
So where y'all wanna put tax commissioner and assessors?
Well, I don't know yet. Once DFAC moves, we'll probably put them over there until we figure out what we're doing with that building or where.
One step at a time.
Courts as well are concerned.
That's why it'd be a great plus that DFACs can go over there with Brian and them and look at it and go, we can make this work. Boom. Then we, now we're opening up spaces for us to start putting people while we're doing work.
Yeah. And, and, uh.
Well, I said.
If we got no place, and that's the nicest building there right now.
Court people over there and get the courthouse right. The first thing we wanted to do was get DFACs out, courthouse people over there to get the courthouse right.
Yeah.
They go back, then taxing all that.
But we also have to take into consideration, if we do move that in the court system up there, we've got to construct or figure out a courtroom.
Yeah. If it's, if it's temporary, you can build one, not super expensive.
Well, we could build it like this and that building easy. We could take out the whole front section and make that a courtroom with a hallway to come in. It'd be a little bit bigger. And then it would work for administration down the road if that's what is needed once we get Kai and him back.
What we'll do is, is maybe we need to, we need to sit down with, uh, everybody here and, um, we got a, we got a good plan going and, and we're not gonna leave the tax commission, the tax assessment out.
No.
We just need to know how to accommodate them with this overall plan and then we'll, uh, we'll do that. So once we get these square footages down, we'll take a look at this, uh, uh, West Georgia building over here. Uh, I don't, I'd be against it. It might accommodate, you know, the offices there as well.
But obviously, like we said, there's so many rooms over here, but we can't do nothing with it unless we move them out.
Right.
You know, and we don't want to lose monthly income like Brian says, so we need to try to accommodate them over there. They keep paying us and now we got a building.
And they may have, uh, they may say, hey, look, we've got, uh, much space that we were talking about and thinking about anyway. And if they do, then that gives us a spot.
They don't.
Anyway.
Let me take that out of your head, if they don't.
Just, just, I had a thought. Okay, I'm gonna sit down and let you guys ensure, think about, I think we got some.
Direction. Yep. So thank you, Kai, for busting up that conversation too.
Thank y'all for listening, Jimmy. I apologize.
No, no, not yet. Appreciate it.
Do we have further planning to do or do we need to just?
No, I think we're good. We, we've got some direction. We've got some different ideas and things too that we need to mull over and figure out the best way to incorporate. So we've got a lot to go on this one.
We do need to, uh, we'll need to get back together once we got this information.
Well, we need to, we need to figure out and get the elections area done and ready for Patty to move in whenever we discuss that. Um, we need to get with DFACs and tour them in the other areas and let them know our plans. We need to pull that contract. We need to pull the contract with West Georgia and look at that too. Um, and I'll be glad to talk to Dr. Post if we need to lease air, some part of that or if they would accommodate us for courtrooms. Um, once Kai and them move up to this area, that may work out. She was willing to do it for no cost before, as long as it didn't interfere with that and as long as we contracted for security and contracted for cleanliness with the court system. I mean, that may be something, but we need to pull those contracts. We need to look at them. We need to let them know our plans or thoughts, tour them, get a rough estimate. Cause like I said, we don't need a $500,000 renovation. So it needs to be the minimal to get them where it needs to be. And once we get that done, at least we've made a step and then we can start working on other.
If we could, uh, on Kai's courtroom, if we could accommodate her here and over, if what you want to check in high through, put those space there in that building to temporarily house or cover office. So, yeah.
Is a second floor courthouse okay? The second floor courtroom, is it okay? Could we still utilize that for court?
Yes, and that, that is an option as well. We can still be in and out of that on court days. We're working on the calendar for next year now.
Cause there's not much that needs to be renovated on the second floor, right? The only danger would be is if they're working on the third.
Right.
At that time, okay.
And it would all work on days of court.
Right.
And what we could do in the remediation scheme is set up a positive airflow room to keep all the airflow out and keeping all the yucky stuff out. And that should buy us enough time to use it, you know, one or two days.
We'll try to figure out something for court, but if we need it to, the second floor is still.
Yes.
So maybe we could run probate and magistrate through there and superior somewhere else if needed or.
We can figure that out. We can definitely move the plan.
But then, well, everybody knows some of the tip rate.
Right.
On the law of court.
Can we put on the, um, August 14th agenda for an update on this list? There should be some data back, right? I mean.
Yes, I'm hoping we can, August 14th, we have all the data back. Or at least be able to.
Well, I think when you get the contracts, send those out to us email so we can all look at them before then too.
We'll, we'll go ahead and review those contracts and highlight any concerns we have.
But if we do have other areas that are leaking majorly and creating a mole issue, we may need to look into leasing some mobile something just to, just to get the employees out of that particular area. But we also have to remember, we don't have areas to secure a lot of records. So if those records are secure and safe where they're at, it may be that they have to visit back to the area to get those.
And we're okay. That's already been discussed.
Now, wasn't, didn't, one of the last meetings, we were going out to get quotes on the elections part of the pathways building to finish the work and establish a timeline.
That's right. And I'll, and I'll meet with them on Friday.
Okay, so that's happening this. Okay.
Hopefully what I have by 14th is a, uh, proposal to go out to see bids and, you know, bring that to you guys.
Okay.
We can, and by the way, just information, we have now all the signature pages of the IDA. Everything's ready to go with that. We'll need you guys to, uh, change your call meeting from 31st to the 1st, just to be on the safe side with the number of days you have to do. So we'll be asking you guys about that tomorrow and, uh, we'll be ready to roll. So then we can put everything except for the future, uh, issues we have with the promoting or whatever, all that will be in the highest. So we can drop that in a straight, a lot of times.
If there's anything you would like for us to make a decision on while we're at the board now, because there's only gonna be three commissioners tomorrow night.
Usually we're a work session.
Oh, a work session, that's right. I think it was one of our call meetings, but no, it's a work session.
Is anything on the agenda that concerns anyone and, uh, you know, I might just take a look at it and tell some of the others, hey, I got a concern over this.
But just since, if we're gonna change meeting dates tomorrow, that was mentioned, if y'all can send us an update. Cause usually we, if we change, we was planning for the 31st.
Yeah, we just need to do it, uh, if we could, in, in, in the morning of August 1st, very next day.
We'll do it tomorrow night. Change the date. I'm just saying notify, send an email or something. We normally don't do that because we're here. And if it changes, we'll see if we go off the old information.
We're only gonna meet you guys in just a very short period of time.
Just so you know, that day is your last.
Yeah, we need to get that.
That is it, yeah.
To what? Oh, to file for that?
We'll make it happen. We'll make it happen.
The, uh, you know, federal election slate for that is also committed now. What should we, you can take the place.
Oh, that's on my agenda.
I gotta send that.
I missed that.
Anything else?
I can't.
Not with that.
Is there anything else?
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm really.
This was a good work session.
Bush.
Yeah, I think so. Well, appreciate everybody being here. If there's anybody else got any comment that they want to add or have a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Got a second?
Second.
On favor? Thank you.